All right. Good evening. It is Tuesday, June 6th, 6:00 PM. Welcome to the North Brookfield Board of Selectmen meeting. If you all rise and suit the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So if we don't have any minutes to approve tonight, we have the warrants. We have, I'll entertain a motion to approve school warrant number 1063 for $184,133.80, general warrant number 1064 for $350,695.75, and payroll warrant number 25 for $376,884.61. So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Nope.
No, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we have a town meeting coming up. And at that town meeting, our annual reports will be available. And we dedicate those every year. And I'm going to read the dedication at this time. Small towns like North Brookfield sometimes have a quick turnover on various employed positions. Every so often, someone fills a position with a great deal of professionalism and heart. A person that lives in the town wants what is best for the town and strives to be the best that they can be in all they do for the town. In 1995, North Brookfield had the happy fortune to hire Ann Genetti as a matron to the police department. She worked at the police department for many years, aiding in the day-to-day business of that department. In 1997, Ann was hired as the treasurer of the town, from which she retired in June of 2022. Over the years, Mrs. Genetti has worked diligently with the other members of the town's financial offices. She was part of the insurance committee. And as treasurer, Ann performed land and property services for the town regarding purchases, as well as tax title liens, et cetera. Being involved with the insurance aspects of town management, Ann was often the lone participant from the town in hearings regarding insurance claims and payroll issues. The town treasurer, according to town meeting votes, is responsible for investing the town of North Brookfield's deposits into well-managed accounts. As town treasurer regarding investments in insurance, Ann Genetti has saved North Brookfield what amounts to millions of dollars over the years. In addition to all her other work, Ann helped write and administer grants, which brought in valuable additional capital to help offset our budgets and obtain additional necessary goods and services we would not have been able to afford otherwise. Perhaps as important to her excellent professionalism and attention to detail in her work, Ann was always willing to help others and offered much assistance and advice to many other town employees and officials in an effort to always remain collaborative and helpful, keeping the town's best interests top of mind always. Even after retirement, Ann works at the school and advises the town's financial officers. In dedicating this year's town report to Ann Genetti, we hope to relay to her our appreciation and thanks. When she finally does retire completely, we hope she enjoys it fully. Thank you, Ann, for your valuable service to North Brookfield. Thank you, ladies. You get the official one that he read. All right. Now, the other thing that Ann is here for, we'll jump right over to because she can't stay, is the town administrator discussion. So in the, since what we talked about last week was hiring a town administrator for approximately a year and a half, and taking that money, $200,000, from ARPA money to fund that because it is a appropriate thing according to the state. And we wanted to hire somebody by the halfway point in the fiscal year. So in an effort to advance that, I've come up with a list of potential candidates for a five-person committee. Ann Genetti being one of them. Bob Locatelli from the finance committee. Chris Caputo from the ARPA committee. And from, he's elected to the water department. Tim Canada from the school committee. And Michelle Protritus from the planning board. And then I'll entertain discussion on that. But first, we have to entertain a motion to approve that committee. So.
Second.
All right. Discussion. Sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah. I think the only question I have is, do we want somebody? I mean, maybe that's Ann's role, but do we want somebody from the town offices as a representative on the committee as well?
Well, I thought about that. And the reason that I opted out of that was because they'd be on a committee appointing their employer or the person that's directly over them.
I see what you're saying. Yeah. Yeah.
So this way here, all these people are outside of the purview of that person, but they have a good understanding of how town works.
Right. Yep. I think that's a good group.
John?
Yep.
Tom's good. All right. Motion's been made and seconded for these five people to be asked to be on this committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So there it is. Since you're here, would you like to be on the committee?
Yes, I would. Sure.
Tim's not here, is he?
He's not. He's watching, I think.
Okay. All right. And then give Bob a call and Chris tomorrow. So anybody have any questions on that? All right. Bill?
Just a question whether the committee would have a time certain date to complete their work and get the hiring process done as soon as possible?
Well, I think it will be time-sensitive. But once we get the committee appointed, we'll have that discussion because they're going to have to basically hit the ground running. Sue?
Well, I was just going to say basically the same thing as Bill because of the time. You know, the time, we want them to understand that time is of the essence because of the various issues that the town is dealing with right now with budgets and things of that nature. So it's really important that we have them realize that this is not something that they can relax days ago. They just got to hit the ground running and go for it.
Yep. And that's the point of bringing it up tonight.
Can we possibly give them maybe sort of a timeframe? An idea like three months or five months to come up with recommendations?
Well, I'm hoping it would be less than that because
Me too, but.
Because we want to hit the halfway point on the fiscal year.
Okay.
So that's, the end game is, you know, before we get
Fiscal year ends in July? No. When?
Yeah. July 1st is the beginning of fiscal year.
So you want them to give you recommendations by July 1st?
No. Halfway through the fiscal year would be November-ish.
Oh, okay. 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 I got you. All right.
So.
Yeah. Great.
Hi, Nancy Waldron. I'm just wondering, do we have a job description? Or is that something that
That's something the committee's going to work on, yes.
As well as
We have some from other towns, but the committee will work on that.
As well as the salary?
Yes. That'll all be discussed in committee. Who else had their hand up?
Did a question.
All right. Did either of you have anything to add since?
A little early for that.
A little early. Okay. All right. Okay. So I guess that, we'll move on from that. Next thing, we have reserve fund requests. And transfer requests. Well, it looks like one of each. So the reserve fund request to the finance committee is for the council on aging purchase of service account. The amount requested is $1,961.26 to be transferred to the purchase service account for council on aging. Current balance is negative $1,187.25 to cover negative balance and three invoices for pest control and national grid for purchase service on current warrants totaling $774. And pest control will be invoiced three times this year. So, all right. I'll entertain a motion to approve that. So move.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The next one is a request for transfer appropriations with restrictions. The amount requested is $450 from the election and census department account salary to the election and census other expenses. Printing of the ballots for the annual election was more expensive than originally budgeted. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next thing is the Worcester Regional Retirement Vote. Do we have something on that in here?
No. Well, I had given it to you last week.
All right. So I don't have my copy of that. So we have to vote to approve the 2% COLA for the retirees. And it's something that they're going to do anyway, I think. So we need to vote on that regardless. So it's to approve the 2% COLA raise for our retirees effective July 1st. Or actually, they want it retroactive to July 1st of last year. So I'll entertain a motion to approve that. So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Nope.
Nope.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, last week, we voted to approve the budget for the upcoming town meeting. There was a minor change because Senator Goby is leaving the office and there's going to be a special election. So we have to fund that. So from stabilization, the amount proposed is It's a little bit more than it was the last time. I don't have that written down, so.
I do. It's, last time was $289,012.89.
So, all right. I'll entertain a motion to approve that budget.
So we're approving the difference?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Master Plan Open Space Committee. Who's here for the Master Plan Open Space Committee?
Well, I really want those submitting requests.
Okay.
But there's a bunch of us who are actually involved in. So basically, what we'd like to do, the planning board is discussing this. The committee that has put together the most recent master plan did a lot of work. And a lot of master plan includes future plans for the town as required and things that are recommendations. But that particular committee doesn't stay with the master plan. And we're recommending that a separate committee be formed to keep track of and try and move forward the initiatives that are set forth in the plan so that, because in past years, I think we all know that things have been put in the master plan and never happened because it just falls into a vacuum. So we work with John Turner. I don't know if he's here or not, but he did a ton of work on it, particularly open space, but on the whole thing. And we just would hate to see it lay fallow for lack of governance. So we would like your fine body of people to, I don't know, come up with an appropriate group to oversee moving it forward.
Or approve the formation of a committee?
Okay. How many people do you want to be?
Five.
Five? All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the formation of a committee to forward the master plan, open space.
Second.
All right. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
Do they need to be town officials, people from town?
I mean, I don't think we necessarily handpicked a group or anything yet, but we would obviously want them to be people from the different departments. Conservation, planning, maybe, you know, zoning enforcement, something.
Who was on the initial committee? Ann Hicks?
Me, Ann Hicks, John Turner, Sheila Orzy, and Sue Lyons.
Is that something we're going to do through the planning board? Get a committee?
I think we would come up with at least recommendations.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's the planning board?
They all did a ton of work already. I don't know if any of them wants to continue. If they knew that's great for continuity, but.
Yeah, I know two, you know, three people on this.
Well.
I think we would come up with a recommendation for
So we moved and seconded the formation of this committee. I think that we can, we can vote on that and just forward it to the planning board to give us recommendations for appointment. Whether it's the people that were on it before or somebody new, that is up to the planning board to give us a recommendation. So, all right. Anything on that?
No. I like that idea.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
We have a request for services for, a request for resources for a film that will be done on Lake Lashway. The organization making the request is Barron's Cove, The Film Incorporated. Is Shane here?
No. No one could be here, but Chief Smith and Chief Hallway both talked to him on the phone and they're both satisfied with, they're not going to need too much help from them. But they did offer to pay for a police detail if it's not going to be needed.
Okay. Well, this is our, just our initial approval, right? So, all right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the request for resources for the film company. So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Does everybody know what's going on down there? They want to make a one-day film of some guy getting out of a boat?
Yeah. Chief Smith and Chief Hallway both talked to the film guys and
That's all the info we got from the last. Well, just so you know, something's going on at the beach.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. It's just the one.
Oh, it's just the one.
Yeah. All right. Next, we have Herbert and Christie Seymour and a redress of grievances. Okay. Yep. So we're going to hear what they have to say. We'll take it under advisement and go from there.
So due to a pending investigation and advice provided by legal counsel, we will not be able to take any questions at this time. My name is Herb Seymour and this is my wife, Christie. We are fairly new residents in this town. We are here today to take the opportunity to introduce ourselves and our involvement with the recent local controversy. After learning that our town would be allowing the president from the Rural Justice Network, Tashina Marie Holmes, to host a drag queen show performance at the Pride event scheduled for June 24th, my wife and I were concerned, along with many other residents. When my wife and I researched drag shows on YouTube, we were disgusted with the perversion that is being pushed on children nationwide. And now it's in our own town. The costumes were indecent and the dancing was lewd. No question, this is adult entertainment. Adult entertainment should be performed in a private setting or other appropriate venues, not at a public playground. We wanted to raise awareness and see if our fellow town residents had some of the same concerns we did. So we decided to mail out 1,000 letters to registered voters along with three petitions. The content of our letter basically introduced ourselves and shared our concerns of the drag show being performed at the town playground in front of the many children that live and play there. If people opposed this, they were given the opportunity to sign the petition addressed to the board of selectmen imploring them to cancel the drag show. The other two petitions were to recall Elizabeth Brooke Canada, selectwoman, and Douglas Barowski, Board of Health. Both were being recalled for these reasons. Number one, extreme bias for individuals associated with the North Brookfield Democratic Town Committee over and above the needs of the entire town. Number two, blatant support of immorality. And number three, constant attempts at shutting down free speech. We asked the registered voters to mail these responses to the PO box along with a self-addressed postage paid envelope that was provided with the petitions by May 26th. We were so passionate about the cause, to protect the innocence of the children and protect the rights of the families, that we invested over $3,000 to purchase a copy machine, paper, ink, a post office box, envelopes, and 2,000 stamps. It took my wife three days to handwrite 1,000 addresses. Due to the controversial nature, we knew it would be difficult to petition in person. What motivated us both to invest so much time and money into this cause? Truth is, we knew we had nothing to gain by doing it. We had no intention for running for any political office and we knew we could be potentially persecuted for communicating our beliefs and objectives. We live in a rural part of town. This event would not directly affect us. It was when we witnessed the video at the Board of Selectmen meeting of the mother with two children that lives on the Common. She expressed her concerns and disdain that we felt she had the right to protest this unfair decision. Where are her rights? And where is enforcement of her children's rights? The Common in North Brookfield is exactly where her home is. Why should she have to leave her own home to avoid this drag show? She was told to take her kids and leave her home or shut her windows, her window curtains. Unbelievable. It took a few days before we started to receive returned mail and signed petitions. We were encouraged by the amount of participation at first. Some people chose not to recall anyone, but signed their wish to cancel the drag show. Then others had collected multiple signatures from their neighbors for all three petitions. I think it was within a week of sending out the mailings that we received a great deal of hate mail. And it has lasted for weeks. Not only hate mail from locals, we also received hate mail postmarked from Boston, St. Louis, Missouri, and even today, we received one from Baltimore, Maryland. After receiving an obscene package delivered to my home address, specifically to my wife, we contacted the North Brookfield Police Department and filed a voluntary statement. We have since then received countless letters of hate mail with content so vulgar and obscene, I will not repeat it here. Many letters had substances in them and some were wishing my kids ill will. Prior to this family-friendly drag show, we felt pretty safe in town. Now we are on high alert. We felt it necessary to put up no trespassing signs and video surveillance at our home. We have been to the police station several times with new incoming hate and harassing mail and deliveries. We don't answer our phones unless we know the caller. And my wife even deactivated her Facebook account because the social media environment was getting hostile. The cost for speaking up has been severe. There are newspaper articles demanding our good name, damaging our good name and falsely pairing us up with white supremacists. Tashina Marie Holmes, president of the Rural Justice Network, has slandered us publicly on her TikTok videos, calling us, quote, "mean, hateful, and discriminating against gender, non-conforming people, drag, whatever the community in general. Don't give the mean, angry people your energy." Those are her words. Telling her followers, "It's not an okay letter." And don't fight hate with hate. Our letter did not have one ounce of hatred in it. Just great concern for the children. Just because we disagree, it doesn't mean we are hateful. Many people felt the drag show was inappropriate. They wanted to sign the petitions, but they would not because of fear. Fear of losing their jobs, fear of harassment, fear of our own town being sued, fear of individuals requesting a Freedom of Information Act and our retaliation and being targeted. Now we can say firsthand, we understand completely. After this experience, my wife and I have been humbled that close to a couple hundred people that do not even know us personally would trust us to sign these petitions. Their voices matter too. The last few weeks have been extremely difficult, but also a great reminder of how easy we can take our freedoms for granted. We have received supportive comments from our community thanking us for our efforts. As of May 30th, 2023, the last day of the recall, we have received a total of 181 signatures to recall selectwoman Elizabeth Brooke Canada, 177 signatures to recall Board of Health Douglas Barowski, and 187 signatures to cancel the drag show. We were informed by the town clerk that in order to have a successful recall, we would need 15% of the registered voters to sign the first two petitions. That would mean 568 signatures for each recall for elected officials. The petition to cancel the drag show is not on a time or tally restriction. After all the hate mail, threats, mistreatment, and obscenities, we will not be submitting the recall petitions to the town clerk. If the petition to cancel the drag show is necessary to successfully cancel the show, then we will submit them to the appropriate persons. It is important to us to protect the ones who were courageous enough to sign them. We don't want anyone to go through what we have gone through. It has been brought to my attention that all three people on the select board have been harassed, some even threats, since this drag show has been requested. Either by messages left on the town answering machine, voicemails, or personal cell phones. According to selectwoman Elizabeth Brooke Canada's article, she also has been a target of hate at her own home as well. Here is an excerpt from a blog published May 24th, 2023, from the Southern New England Conference United Church of Christ authorized by Michael Strick. She, meaning Elizabeth Brooke Canada, also became a target of hate. People drove by her home honking loudly and repeatedly at odd hours. Others shouted obscenities at her when she was out working in her garden. Brooke filed a police report and installed security cameras, something she never thought she would need to do in her small town. It was a reminder that the important work can also bring dangers. And Brooke, we can relate with you. We really can. And we're sorry. So I ask you, how safe is this event? Our request Our request was to cancel the drag show for the protection and the innocence of the children. We never protested the Pride event. After the terrorism that my family and this town has gone through over the past few weeks, it is clear the entire event is unsafe. It should be considered that the entire Pride event be canceled. Who will be held liable if something goes wrong? It is our taxpayers that will cover the thousands of dollars it will cost the town and to add security measures for this family-friendly event. Brooke mentioned in her article, it was Tashina that contacted the American Civil Liberty Union, also known as the ACLU, directly. Because of this, they-
That's, that's not accurate. I didn't name Tashina. I said the RJN.
So, okay, it was in the article. Thank you for clarifying it. So the RJN. So the, uh, because of this, they threaten potential litigation if the select board did not reverse its previous decision to cancel the drag show. We thought it would be appropriate to petition outdoors at the North Brookfield Senior Center since it is a location where electric, uh, elections are held. Out of consideration for the seniors, we went into the building and asked for permission to set up a table outside. The person we spoke with mentioned, even though many of our seniors feel similarly as we did, they did not feel it was safe for them if we sat in the parking lot and asked for signatures. We didn't protest. We didn't threaten. We didn't make any demands. We respected their concern for safety of our seniors and graciously moved to another location. That is a true example of how to love your neighbor. We want to thank the courageous people of our town that sent their signed petitions and well wishes. We are especially grateful for our police department, our fire, fire department, and the elected officials that put safety of the people in our community above the public, the politics in our small town. May the town in North Brookfield be a beacon of light and a true example for other towns. We can only hope the proper authorities will use wisdom and make sure all people of our community are treated fairly and that this matter be treated lawfully, fair, equitable, and just. Thank you for your time.
Well, as far as canceling the event, the Board of Selectmen, uh, has no authority to do that. As far as insurance and details go and costing the town money, if, so this, the, um, the Rural Justice Network was, and the ACLU, uh, according to their article, um, they were going to supply us with insurance for the event. They're also gonna pay for details. Um, whether they do or not, I have no idea. Uh, it's not a Board of Selectmen sanctioned event, and, um, it's a private thing that's being done on the Common by the Rural Justice Network. And if anything unfortunate does occur, the town is not liable. The town cannot be, cannot be sued successfully. However, the Rural Justice Network can be. So, um, it's not gonna cost tax, taxpayers any money. And that's from town council. So, um, other than that, there's really nothing that I can add to that. You have anything to add?
No.
Well, I just want everybody to know it doesn't fall on us. It falls on the people and the presenters.
All right, uh, and thank you. We'll take that under advisement. All right. Fire report for March and April. Brooke, would you read that?
Sure.
Please.
Uh, let's see.
So-
Do you want me to read the whole letter or just read that?
Just the highlighted stuff on the-
Okay.
Second one.
Um, the incident type, building fires. We had two.
Well, you can read the first page.
Okay.
Another, this.
I asked you that.
Oh, I was talking about the, you don't have to read like all the, just the highlighted stuff on that page.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. This report was submitted for the months of March and April. We've received a couple new applications. They're being put through fire ground training at this time. We've been very busy. Myself and the department would like to thank the Board of Selectmen and all the townspeople for the opportunity to rebuild the old fire station and highway. This was made possible by our Board of Selectmen with the purchase of Huck's Garage. This purchase is saving the town about six million dollars. The cost of a new fire station was around thirteen million. Uh, when we're done with the rebuilding process, highway and fire departments will all be in great shape for the future, plus the town picks up four acres attached to town property. I'm working on grants to help with this rebuild. Thank you again for this opportunity. Incidents are on the following pages, and this is from, uh, Chief Hallway. Building fires, two. Fires in a structure other than a building, one. Chimney fire, chimney or flue fire confined to chimney or flue is one. Brush or brush and grass mixture fire, one. Medical assist, assist EMS crew, five. Motor vehicle accident with no injuries, one. Oil or other combustible liquid spill, one. Chemical hazard, no spill or leak, one. Carbon monoxide incident, one. Assist police or other governmental agency, two. False alarm or false call or other, two. Smoke detector activation due to malfunction, one. Smoke detector activation, no fire, unintentional, two. Severe weather or nat- natural disaster or other, one. Severe weather or natural disaster standby, one. And total number of incidents, twenty-three. That was for the month of March. Uh, this is for the month of April. Building fires, two. Brush or brush and grass mixture fire, three. Special outside fire or other, one. Medical assist or assist EMS crew, eight. Motor vehicle accident with no injuries, one. Combustible, flammable, gas, liquid condition or other, one. Electrical wiring, equipment problem or other, one. Attempted burning, illegal action or other, two. Lockout, one. Smoke or odor removal, one. Public service, one. Prescribed fire, one. Smoke scare, odor of smoke, one. False alarm or false call or other, three. Sprinkler activation due to malfunction, one. Severe weather or natural disaster standby, one. The total number of, of incidents, thirty.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the fire report for March and April.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Our North Brookfield Fire Department has, has gone through so much recently, and, um, this past weekend, they were, uh, in Spencer at the fire that we all know about, and I just wanna have it on record in saying how proud I am of them. They were called along with many other towns, but, uh, our crew was, was right in the middle of it and doing, doing major work trying to save the church, and they also were very involved in trying to save the residents next door to the church. And, uh, we should be thanking our lucky stars that we have such a professional and exemplary group, um, in our town, working to save lives every day, and, uh, I think they should be commended for their hard, hard work.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Thank you.
And after, um, after the church fire, they all went out at one-thirty to a, uh, assist in West Brookfield as well.
And then at five o'clock in the morning.
Yep.
So they didn't sleep.
So, all right, so motions made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next thing. Letter of support for Carolyn Romano. John, would you read that, please?
Uh, this is in regards of a grant application, public benefit, twenty-two Summer Street, North Brookfield. Dear Ms. Romano, on behalf of the town of North Brookfield, we are pleased to provide this letter of support to you. We appreciate that as a resident for over six years, you have come to love our town as evidenced by your recent investment in the downtown through your purchase of the historic building at twenty-two Summer Street. We are delighted to support your grant application to the underutilized properties program, mass development, and appreciate that additional investment in the property will provide benefit to the community of North Brookfield and its residents should funding be granted through this program. Located right next to the historic townhouse, the twenty-two Summer Street building was constructed in the mid eighteen hundreds and has been an important part of North Brookfield's history, serving over the last hundred and seventy-five years as a shoe factory, furniture store, undertaker's office, pizzeria, and various businesses, and even the U.S. Post Office for a period. Currently, the building has a retail establishment on the first floor with a June opening plan and a rented apartment on the second floor. The third and fourth, oh, the third and fourth levels of the building, as we understand it, as well as other parts of the building, remain undeveloped and are ripe for the opportunities presented by the grant program. We are looking forward to the planned improvements that will serve a public purpose and benefit to the North Brookfield community and its residents include additional housing units. There are many renters in North Brookfield. Adding two additional apartments in the center of town within walking distance to town amenities, necessities, adds value for our residents. Two, improved accessibility. Currently, the building is not required to be accessible for people with physical disabilities. Improving access to retail and housing by adding ramp and an elevator is an important town value, town value around inclus- inclusivity and belonging. Safety upgrades to the building will bring with them requirements related to the fire safety code. Improvements here will keep our residents and nearby structures safe in the event of fire and public safety, better able to respond to any emergent issues. Four, enhanced aesthetics and appeal. Bringing back the historic character of this building, a hundred and seventy-five-year-old building, nearly a hundred and seventy-five-year-old building, will improve the charm and appeal of our burgeoning downtown area and underscore North Brookfield's pride and commitment to its long history. These changes are welcome and only support the town's other recent and planned improvements that impact the town's overall revitalization. Five, free events and more options for public meeting, gathering space, grant funding. To increase the utilization of the building will also support the ability for Ms. Romano to offer free events and community meeting space for use by local nonprofits, government committees, and school volunteer groups and families. As it stands now, the building is prohibited from allowing public access to over half of the building's available space. North Brookfield is a community that strives to improve and provide safe, rich experiences for all of its residents. We admire that you wish to contribute significantly to the life of the town, both through your own investment while also leveraging other resources like those available through this program. We wish you the best of luck with your application. Sincerely, Jason, myself, and Brooke.
That's Carolyn Romano. Thank you.
Oh.
Hey, you're welcome. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to sign that letter of support.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Sounds great. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next thing we have is a, um, Community Development Block Grant Program Extension from fiscal year twenty. This is attached as the extension form. We're asking for a programmatic extension through December twenty-twenty-three. Please note that North Brookfield's contract with the D H C D for this fiscal year twenty program goes through June of twenty-twenty-four. There are still some housing delays, plus the rebid for the senior center is happening as we speak. I'll be in town tomorrow for the walkthrough. Please call or email if you have any questions. That's, uh, Chris Dunphy from CMR PC. I'll entertain a motion to sign the extension.
So move.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Just you, I think. Oh, no, sorry.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. North Brookfield Sportsman's Club jukebox license. This is to certify that a permit is hereby granted to North Brookfield Sportsman's Club. Twenty Pointon Road and said, North, town of North Brookfield, to keep one jukebox for public hire to be used for amusement merely and not for the purpose of gaming, for money or property. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter one forty, general laws as amended by Chapter three sixty-one of the Acts of nineteen forty-nine, and upon such terms and conditions as adopted by the town relating thereto and shall continue in force until December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, unless sooner suspended or revoked. So, um, the Sportsman's Club has done some major upgrades to their, uh, facility over the last year or two, and, uh, they added on to the bar and they wanna put in the jukebox. So, um, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve and sign for this permit for the jukebox.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Better than having me go up there and sing.
That's true.
So this is licensing for the music, to play the music? Is that what they're saying?
So that they can have a jukebox.
Yeah, it has to do with the money versus the-
Oh, the money, okay, versus the musical businesses, yeah, okay.
So. So, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Right, public comment period. Joanne. Remember, two minutes.
I just wanted to thank, uh, Herb and Christie Seymour for their eloquent presentation and, uh, and thank them for their courageous attempt to, uh, keep something so obnoxious out of our town. And, uh, and the town is a better place because of, uh, your wonderful family being here. I just wanna thank you.
Tina?
I just wanted to let you all know that down on the Common, along the fence, the way we drive here, there are still several bags of trash up against the fence from the Coalition's, um, carnival.
Okay. We will, we will pass that along.
And it's getting poor, uh, something's getting into it. I think it was from where the food truck was.
Probably, yeah.
Didn't they have a dumpster there?
They did. They did. Whoever was over on that end did use the dumpster.
We'll look into it.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else? Sal.
Kinda add to that. There's, uh, still a pretty decent amount of ruts on the Common, and I know that the soccer league canceled. They only had like one game left for this part of the season. I'm afraid that they're not gonna be able to continue on with their ball season on the field if it stays in the condition that it's in. It's not safe.
We'll look into it.
Thank you.
All right, and anybody else? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, oh, we got announcements. So we have a special town meeting Friday, June sixteenth at seven P M. We have the adjourned annual town meeting, uh, Friday, June sixteenth at seven-thirty P M. And there is a treatment for Lake Lashaway on June twentieth. And we have a letter here from that, uh, and says, "The pond and lake connection has been contracted, contracted by the Lake Lashaway Community Association for the twenty-twenty-three season to continue managing the invasive milfoil, fanwort, brittle niad, and nuisance weed, potamogin within the lake," vitamin, vitamin, right? Uh, "Within the lake, uh, management activities will include periodic pond inspections and targeted weed treatments. First treatment is scheduled for the morning of Tuesday, June twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, with follow-up inspections and treatments yet to be determined. It's suggested that you periodically visit our website for any changes as a result of weather conditions. Please note the following water use restrictions following treatment." So for one day, there's a swimming, boating, and fishing restriction, one day livestock watering restriction, two days of direct drinking restriction, and five-day irrigation- watering restriction, two days of direct drinking restriction, and five-day irrigation restriction. And then the website's, uh, lake lashaway.org. And if you want to contact them, you can contact them at lake lashaway@gmail.com. All right. I guess we're going into executive session.
Can I make an announcement?
Sure.
Um, I just want to announce that June twenty-fourth, we're having a family-friendly fun event at Common Ground from twelve to four. All families are invited.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we were supposed to go into executive session at six forty-five, but we finished up our regular meeting. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for reason number one, to discuss complaints against the public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, and we will ex- exit executive session only to adjourn our open meeting.
So move.
Second.
And then we, uh, vote on, actually vote on that with a roll call vote. So, uh, Jason Petritas, yes.
John Cribb, yes.
Brooke Canada, yes.
All right, thank you all, and have a good night.